Okay, good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, December 1st, 2025, and this is the Board of Estimate and Contract Public Hearing. This is a public hearing, not a town hall. So we are here to hear your comments. Each person is limited to three minutes. This is standard for the Board of Estimate and Contract Budget Meetings Hearing. So you have three minutes to speak. At the end of three minutes, your time will be cut off because we have a lot of people here. So I'm assuming we have a lot of people who want to speak. And so we want to give everyone their opportunity to have their three minutes. While I am sure there are a lot of complicated and hot emotions, we're asking everyone to be respectful. You can absolutely speak with passion, but I'm asking that we also carry ourselves with respect on both sides, from here as well as from there. And we will move forward from there. Perbonia, if you can please read the... So again, this is just a hearing. We will hear your comments. I will give a brief PowerPoint presentation, as we have traditionally done, as I do when I present this to the Board of Estimate and Contract as well. And then we will begin to hear your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the Board of Estimate and Contract Public Hearing for the Proposed 2026 City of Mount Vernon Annual Estimate. Today, Monday, December 1st, 2025, scheduled for 7:00 PM here in the City Council Chambers at Mount Vernon City Hall. This public hearing was advertised in the Journal News on Friday, November 21st, Tuesday, November 25th, and Friday, November 28th. It was also blasted on our social media, on the city website, and in the retunda. I'm going to proceed with the roll call. Comptroller Morton?
President.
Council President Brown. Mayor Patterson Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Davenport? As the budget was presented, this is the draft budget estimate. It was presented to the Board of Estimate and Contracts. You can see. One second please. So as you can see, the draft budget estimate is 6.09% increase. 6.09% increase. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to tell... Please, everyone, there are exits to the front and to the back. If you need a restroom, the restrooms are out the door. And before... Well, the women's restroom, before you get to the elevator, the men's restroom right past the elevator to your right. And those are the standard things that y'all do when y'all meet up here. And we're asking if everyone can please silence your cellphones. Thank you very much. Okay. So some of the drivers of this budget is that, right now, we have $2 million included in the budget so that we can negotiate as required with our collective bargaining units. In good faith, we have four unions. That is police, fire, Teamsters, and CSEA. That comprises over 90% of our staff here in the City of Mount Vernon. This increase, it said, also reflects $3.2 million rise in retirement costs. And $15.2 million in 2025... It went from $15.2 million in 2025 to $18.4 million in 2026, resulting from our union contracts that we did in 2023. As you are aware, when we did the contracts in 2023, they covered a six-year period. And so between the six years of salary increases, six years of retro, that added to the retirement rate from '25 to '26, once the state calculated what it would be going forward. Our debt service also, which was about $1.5 million, has doubled to $3 million due to the bond anticipation notes used to cover the prior year's retroactive payments of about $15.6 million. Capital projects and replacement of DPW vehicles and equipment that were 20-plus years or older that we had to purchase that went above and beyond what we used in ARPA. In total, nearly over $4 million was added in expenses that was attributable, again, going back to our union contract obligations. Next. So we've had some new developments. And New York State did give, and this was not in the original presentation. So New York State released updated numbers from our retirement. So when we originally did the budget with the 6.09% increase, it was $18,349,435. And it is now increased, from the state in just this past week and a half, for an increase of $461,783. Our debt service increased from $3,322,288 to $4,020,674, a difference of $988,446. That's a total combined from those two numbers, which have been the main drivers of this budget period. An additional $1,450,229. These two changes brings the draft annual estimate from 6.09 to 7.48. We have already started working, as we had been... Hmm? Oh, you can.
Yeah. So as we prepare, as the budget was prepared originally, then we received notification last week from the New York State Retirement Department that there was an error in their calculation on the retirement cost, which then was what increased the retirement cost. I am right now in conversations with them about how to remedy that because my position to them is that we went forward with an estimate for the budget based upon a number that we received from them originally. And now we've got a change in that number from them. And so I'm to have a call tomorrow morning to talk with them. So we're actually working with them to try to see what we can do to bring that number down, at least over this last... This next year. In addition to that also, we also did receive the update from our financial advisors related to the debt service, which, as I've explained in a few of my presentations, on this debt service and the need for the bans based upon the fact that the contracts previously had not been settled. And so at some point in time, we ended up having to settle six years of contracts for three unions. And in doing so, because of the six years of not having contracts, we also then incurred what they call retro payments for those years that needed to be paid in that. Had we actually added that amount to the 2024 budget, that would have had the tax increase be about 18% for that one year, based upon the calculations. And here's how you do it. Just because there's been this conversation about that not being true. And here's how you do it. The unions, and if the unions are going to communicate to you all about what was happening within the unions, were not in agreement to spread their retro payments over several years. Typically, what we do is we end up... That's why you have a fund balance. Typically, your fund balance actually then has a allocated amount in the fund balance for those retro payments, for those negotiations. But because the city does not have one, and you have seen my reports as to the declining amount of fund balance from 2016 to 2019, we then had to find ways in order to fund this obligation. When you look at the budget, $700,000 equals a percent point. So if we took the, again, the $15.8 million, and we then divided that into a matter of even two years, the amount would have exponentially increased for that year's budget. So in talking with the financial advisors, the best option for us at the time was for us to then go out for a ban and to be able to, again, as we know how those work, to be able to renew those bans every year as we pay on the interest. And then in the third year, second and third year, we would end up having to pay on the principal, which is what is happening this year. The goal is for us to be able to collect in the taxes that are outstanding so that when we come back in the future, whether that's next year or the year after, that we do not have to ban, renew the ban for that amount. Bring it down, right? And if that doesn't work, as we're working on the audits, to get the audits completed and to return our actual credit rating, to then extend it out further so that, again, that number will then begin to come down. What will happen in 2027 with the retirement cost is the cost of those retro payments is why the retirement cost jumped in one year. The anticipation is that that number will come down in 2027. So I wanted to kind of give an explanation as to what's happening as it pertains to the retirement cost and the ban cost.
Okay. Thank you so much, Comptroller Morton, for just adding more content and context to those numbers. You can proceed. The assessed evaluation of properties here in the City of Mount Vernon did increase from 2025 to 2026 from $146,049,742 to $147,523,232. You can go on. Clearly, we're working to grow our tax base through our residential, retail, and industrial tax base. To support ongoing growth, we've added to position a Director of Economic Development and IDA Director to the 2026 budget. The cost will be incurred by the IDA, so it does not impact the taxes. But we had a staff person in IDA, but we had not had a director because we did not have an officially functioning IDA for the first few years as we had to get our IDA certification back, which we did. And so now we can move forward with a fully funded position. So there are the major appropriations that are really driving this. Again, as I stated before, as you could see from the chart in gray, is the retirement cost. And this is based on the old numbers with the increase. It went up by $3,159,596. That number is now at about $3.6 million. Additionally, the debt service originally had increased by $1,553,022. And now that number is about, well, So that has increased. Actually, our health insurance has decreased. Our health insurance is usually one of our biggest drivers of the budget, but health insurance has decreased, not because it's really decreased, it's decreased because we have cut the number of positions in the budget, not just empty positions, but positions that people are currently sitting in. And so we've cut several positions. That's bringing down that health insurance number. And if you look in this budget right here, while the original draft estimate, we brought down salaries by almost $1 million. It is now greater than that. And Social Security, of course, when you bring salaries down, goes down as well. And so, again, the driver in the increase in this budget is not salaries. It is not healthcare. It is not Social Security. It is retirement amount of $3.6 million and the debt service of $2.5 million. Those are the main drivers in the increase in this budget. We can go to the next one. So with workforce, as I said, over the past year, the city carried some vacant positions that we kept unfilled, understanding that there were going to be freezes and shifts in operation and that we were going to have to cut positions. We've cut positions each year. Several of these vacancies, particularly within the police department, we have not been able to fill. As we've heard from some of our surrounding departments, they said what was the hiring pool has become a hiring puddle. And so we've had transfers. We've seen these departments throughout the region go with positions unfilled. So we did not want to continue to build the residence for positions that would not be filled. And so we reduced the number of officers in those positions that can't be filled in way doing to ongoing recruitment efforts. And it's not just a Mount Vernon issue. It's a nationwide issue. In fiscal year 2026, we've formally eliminated eight of the positions in the PD, but maintaining current staffing levels that we have right now so that service delivery is not impacted. Beyond vacancy eliminations, we identified additional positions that, while very valuable to the city, must be absorbed through strategic consolidation of duties, cross-departmental coordination, and continued operational efficiency. Next. The budget allocation. If you look at this, salaries are 51% of the budget. Clearly, we're a service organization, and so salaries are going to be your biggest expense. Person benefits, which are your medical costs, your government, your Social Security. Those basic personnel benefits are 37% of the budget. And operational expenses are 12%. What falls under operational expenses? Clearly, debt service falls under operational expenses. But we also have to have gas. We have to have heat. We have to be able to order basic supplies. Things like that are under operational expenses. Any of our IT work, IT platforms that we use to provide services. So that is 12%. That is a very, very thin margin for any business, any of you who run a business, to operate on. But it is the city, on average, is operated on for... Since I've been here, it's been a small operational budget. Next. As I said, major appropriations increased by $4.7 million from 2025 to 2026. And now we know that that number is more like $6.1 million because of the additional expenses that we received from retirement and debt service. Departmental lines, again, have been realigned to actually reflect actual spending. And the overall philosophy for 2026 is to keep departmental appropriations flat, which we have. And throughout the year, the departments instructed to hold the line on operational spending, again, which only comprises, yeah, comprises about 12% of the budget. So let's look at the salaries. The salaries in the City of Mount Vernon are really driven by police, fire, and DPW, with police being 30% of staff salaries throughout the city, fire being 27%, and DPW being 19%. The rest of the city is 25% of staffing costs in the City of Mount Vernon. And, you know, it's further broken down. I mean, I think the mayor's department is less than a percent, but it's, you know, the 25% is really the rest of the city out of police, DPW, and fire. Benefits... Put my glasses on. So the benefits... The biggest block is health and dental insurance, which is 43%. State retirement, which is 28%. Social Security, which is 9%. Debt service, 5%. Miscellaneous and contingency, which on the budget is a laundry list of things, are about 13%. That's the operations. And then other charges, 2%. Next. And so we had revenue additions and reductions. There was a reduction of $1.2 million in sales of real property. The comptroller removed it based on one-time revenue and revenue projection and uncertainty. There was a $600,000 in revenue that was removed from the red light and speed cameras. The red light cameras were taking longer for us to get the contracts on, and it took longer for the governor to approve them. The speed cameras were just approved, I believe, October 27th. We wouldn't be able to... We don't have any formal award from the state yet for the permission to have speed cameras and put those back. And we'll put those in the community for the first time. And it's going to take us a while to get those up and running. So we did not want to just put that in as empty revenue. Sales tax, we removed a half a million dollars of sales tax from the budget. That's connected more to national trends around reduction. People are just not spending as much as we're dealing with a lot of economic uncertainty across the country. And so we did not want to just leave that flat. We reduced it by about a half a million dollars. Well, a half a million dollars. And then real property tax, we reduced by $500,000 as well. As in Mount Vernon and everywhere else in Westchester, we have a very tight housing market, but it's also slowing down to the same... Due to the same economic uncertainties that we're seeing throughout the region, the state, and the nation. Next. And they can sit in that front row. It's not a problem. People can sit in the front row. There are seats right here in this front row if people need to sit down. Reductions in revenue continue with a reduction in $150,000 of delinquent school taxes, again, based on the comptroller's projections, declining trend and the uncertainty of collecting these fees, especially giving the eight- to 16-month timeline for MRIM. So MRIM is a process where as if a person has not paid their taxes for two years, we can start a foreclosure process. But it takes about eight to 16 months to do that. And so there is a lagging time in revenues in that time period. Building Department, it was just a realignment of fees and revenue categories. And so the building department fees did not go down. They went up overall. There's a $100,000 reduction in cannabis tax being projected. The cannabis businesses, that might be a recreational expense that people are just not investing in at the same level. So there's additions, and this addition has been adjusted. Parking fines have been adjusted and increased to reflect enhanced enforcement. And onsite prosecutor, we are now required, and we're excited about that, to have a prosecutor to hear parking cases in the city court, which will allow us to increase the percentage for which the parking tickets that we've issued are collected. I know the city writes over $6,000,000 in fines each year. And so we're bringing that from about $3.2 million, which we've already surpassed this year, up to $3.8 million. Per capita state revenue sharing, that is New York State aid that all of the municipalities are receiving, and that's $800,000. And so we've included that in the budget. Our sewer rents have been... We've seen improved collection rates, and so we are reflecting that in the budget. Building and alteration permits are adjusted to actuals and increased fees for large development projects. That is not your house project. That is a development project. Those are increased fees that bring them in line with other cities. So that's not something that goes to the taxpayer. There's an increased revenue of $500,000 for employee contributions for insurance, elected and appointed staff premium contributions, which is something that I've supported since 2023, when we were preparing the 2024 budget. We hope to see increased revenue. We cannot put that in there yet from CSEA and the Teamsters because we are still in collective bargaining with them right now. So during the collective bargaining process, as police and as fire do pay for their health insurance, this is the conversation that we're having with Teamsters and CSEA as well. But we cannot just put that in the budget. It would be an empty number until we finish our negotiations with them. And then we have an increased $245,000 in the budget for a grant from the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, which supports the position of Assistant Engineer and stormwater coordinating positions. And that is part of the $150 million grant that we got. And they're allowing us to use some of that to manage the program. Also, we have pilots. There's a $200,000 increase in pilots. Pilots, people have said pilots mean that people don't pay taxes. No, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. It is an adjusted tax rate, but they do pay taxes. And because of escalating obligations each year, the amount that buildings that have pilots, it goes up. And so there's a $200,000 increase in that number that is expected in existing pilot agreements. The IDA, as I stated, will fund the Economic Development and IDA Combined Director Position. We've increased utilities and gross receipts taxes. There's rate increases from Con Edison. And so we do benefit from the taxes on those. So we've brought that up by $100,000. Memorial Field, expanded event activity, $100,000. A $100,000 increase in revenue from rental of real property. There are updated agreements we have. And there's $100,000 added to refu and garbage charges for fees. And then the last thing we have is pretty much historically, in the past few years, we've been in line with the inflation rates in the state. This year, we are over what the inflation rate is in the state. And again, that driver of that is that increased, that huge bump of $3.6 million in retirement and $2.5 million in debt service. And so that is the presentation. That's just some of the detail that goes behind the numbers that are in this budget. And with that being said, do you have any further comments?
So I would like to at least give some opening remarks around some of the areas in which I've looked at in the budget and also had conversations with the mayor about. And primarily, my focus is going to be on the revenue side of it. One of the things that I've articulated, both publicly in all of the... Also, the reports that have been given, as well as to the mayor, is that we have to focus in on how do we diversify and increase the actual diversity of the revenue pool. So here's the reality of it. The reality is that the Mount Vernon City budget actually consists of approximately about 51%, 52%... fifty-one, fifty-two percent of it coming from the tax base. That is high. In comparison to municipalities even a- around our area and in general. It should be somewhere around about forty or so percent. Right? So it means that if we look at it from the standpoint of dollars, it looks like that there, there needs to be approximately about fifteen million dollars of other revenue that is coming in. Right? In order to bring down the actual tax, um probably tax um contribution um to the entire tax base. So over the last few years, what we have seen is is that we've not necessarily met some of the actual goals and objectives based upon what was outlined in the budget. Now, some of this is historic because it had started a long time ago. And if you remember, there was the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one um audit from the New York State Comptroller that also highlighted that the revenues were out of whack in in how they were actually um adopted, proposed and adopted. And so over the last few years, we've begun to make some of those adjustments. Um, but making those adjustments have not also made up for the fact that we need to also find additional kind of um revenue sources to come in. Um, in order to alleviate that that particular challenge. This year, um, starting, I guess, the latter part of last year into this year's budget cycle, you started to see a declining in the sales tax usage. And again, now Vernon's not different than other municipalities in which there was a decline. However, um, again, the rate in which we are declining is of course of concern in which the mayor, which I've discussed with the mayor and the mayor, and I've had discussions about how do we begin to kind of deal with that. Um, some of the other areas in which, um, again, I've communicated that we need to keep our eyes on. And here's the communication to the administration, particularly the department heads that have responsibilities around revenues, is that we have to keep a very close eye on all of these revenues that we put into this budget um based upon historic data. So now what we did do this year was to provide again the historic data as it pertains to the revenues in each of these lines for at least the last five years. In doing so, is why we recommended from the finance office, the adjustments in the revenue levels. It makes very little sense for us to keep lines um there if we're not achieving them, right? So we basically look at the several years and come up with a reasonable um guesstimate as to what those um revenues would be. Um, when we think about the collective bargaining agreements, one of the reasons why we want to make sure that we try to settle the collective bargaining agreements right now that are behind is because if we don't, then we will have kicked the can down the road and caused caused financial, increased financial um stress to this community. Similar to what was done when the agreements from the two thousand and, what was it, eighteen to twenty-three were not done. And we don't want to do that. And so that's why we are meeting with the um various departments, various um unions to try to negotiate a fair, equitable agreement and not kick this can down the road. As your comptroller, I need to make sure I make it clear that if we do not settle these contracts, we eventually are going to be in a similar situation that we were in in twenty twenty-three. And we do not want to be in that in that situation. And so I'm saying it because I also want the staff members to also hear that we are not in a position where these large increases are going to occur, right? Um, over and we've got to begin to look at the total compensation of what is happening as we as we begin to kind of move forward. Um, the other, the other places in which we are also looking at, of course, is healthcare, right? And the healthcare course continues to go up. Um, so not only are we looking at contributions from again, the the non-represented bodies, right, which consist of the appointed and the elected individuals, but also and having those conversations also with the unions as well. But the third thing we're also attempting to do is look and see, is there another health plan other than the New York State Health Plan, right? Because some of our also contemporaries have begun to move away from it. We just need to find a health plan that's going to be comparable to what is being provided uh to our, to our employees today. So I think those are um some of the, I think, the areas in which I needed to speak about now. I'm sure that as the questions come, uh, we will, I'll be able to to also provide some more context if, context if needed. So what has happened with my office between the time that the budget has been presented um and now is that, as the mayor said, that we've been looking at the budget to see where we can again adjust the budget to bring down this tax rate, right? Even based upon the amount that we actually proposed and understanding that we also got some new information uh from the state and from our financial advisors about the debt and the retirement costs. And so I don't, I want to make sure I make it clear that we're working, my office is working again with the mayor and the council um to really look at the budget, right, try to right-size the budget as best as we can. Um, but there's just been historically some things that actually now we're beginning to have to make up for as we move forward. So those are my kind of just opening comments because again, like I said, I wanted to focus in on the revenue pieces of it because that's critical to this as to how we transform what we do going forward.
Council President Brown, any opening remarks? Okay, with that being said, um, again, just wanted to reiterate that each speaker gets three minutes. This is a hearing, so there will not be a Q and A. We will hear your comments. Um, you will see me doing a lot of writing as I will take notes and um and we will continue to proceed. So if those who want to speak uh against the budget, please proceed to come to the center aisle and um speak at the mic. And if you could give us your name, um, and well, I guess, your name is name, so that I can take notes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm David Reich, one twelve Ridgeway. Um, you talk about revenue, but I think we also need to talk about spending and really, really cutting spending. Uh, uh, my friend and neighbor Vince Ferrandino wasn't able to be here. He submitted some comments that to be read into the record and for some reason uh that was denied. So I am going to uh speak for Vince. These are his words very quickly. Vince, by the way, had been planning commissioner here many years ago. He's a, lived here forty-five, maybe fifty years. Uh, I'll be very quick. Uh, he has many concerns regarding the budget. He's going to limit it to two things. One is out of town conference attendance. For the last two years, I have uh railed to the city council about out of control town, out of control town conference, out of town conference attendance with no program agendas attached. Uh, going to Vegas, Atlanta, Miami, Washington, just to name a few. Uh, this is a matter to about a hundred thousand dollars each year uh across all department lines, including the mayor's office and the city council. This year, as of last month, where the ninety thousand will have been spent on these junkets. Uh, not not including hundreds of person days that have been spent out of the office time that could have been spent addressing the city's problems. Another hundred thousand dollars is allocated uh for this year. Uh, so Vince is asking that this out of town travel be reduced to a bare minimum or even eliminated altogether since we are in such austere times. The second uh issue is Department of Planning and the budget for that. Uh, and I'm just going to paraphrase here so I don't go over my time. Uh, the planning department budget is one point nine million, including one point three in salaries. Uh, and Vince is saying that we should uh uh reduce the staff uh uh by a couple of people. That'll knock down uh a couple of hundred thousand dollars in spending. Uh, and so these are some ways to eliminate money. I'm going to add a comment to my own. Since every dollar counts and the taxpayer dollars are from us. Uh, my own comment, and I really don't include this as a personal attack, but just really a suggestion is um the mayor, the city councilor comptroller uh were granted forty percent raises, I think it was last year. It might be good to, a show of uh support with the community is to maybe rescind those for this year. Since we're all in a budget fight. Again, it's not a personal attack. Please understand that, okay? I like you guys, but uh it's just, we all have to save money and this is another way to save some money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mount Vernon, Axle Ebermann, sixty-one Magnolia Avenue. Madam Mayor, you asked us to be respectful. I'm wondering why that only applies to residents. Once again, this year, the budget is late in violation of the charter. That's the law. That is disrespectful to residents. And it happens year after year. That is never mentioned when it comes to speaking about respect. Once again, the property taxes will increase not just six percent, triple the New York State two percent tax cap, but now apparently seven and a half percent. That's also disrespectful to residents. This comes on top of roughly forty percent tax increases over the last five years. That is also disrespectful. I always hear these calls for respect and civility. There's nothing respectful and civil about what you are doing. You're bleeding people dry while you're giving yourself forty percent raises. That is not respectful. And here's what happening to city services by our taxes go through the roof. When I saw a guy masturbating in front of my house, ten thirty in the morning, police didn't even want to come. They shut up, up, up after forty-five minutes and they just left without doing anything. And only when I filed a complaint did they get into gear when the perpetrator finally pled guilty. Nothing would have happened. The building department is so abysmal dysfunctional, abysmally dysfunctional that you, Madam Mayor, called it the worst in New York State. I don't think I have to push that point if you yourself call it that. The planning department did such a poor job with a comprehensive plan that both you, Madam Mayor, and you, Dr. Morton, as the comptroller, came out to speak against your own department and the plan. That is administrative malpractice. And after two and a half years in the making, over six hundred thousand dollars on consultants, the city did it through on a Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, hoping that nobody would watch. This budget is inflated and it is incoherent. You, Dr. Morton, said yourself that the entire line is just missing, apparently just jumped up a percent point and a half. So the one that we looked at is not even the one that is being passed or discussed right now. One thing that this budget doesn't address at all is the root cause of the cancer that we have in Mount Vernon and what is underlying all of these increases. News, crime, is everybody who you talk to from City Hall who who left City Hall acknowledges in private, but nothing is ever done about it. And as long as this is not being addressed, nothing will change. And that is disrespectful to, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wilma Frank. Longtime resident of Mount Vernon. You started your meeting with uh the raising of taxes, so I'm going to address that. I don't believe every year when you raise taxes will solve the problem. It, in my perspective, it makes it worse. Because as you know, there is many, many people there outside there that cannot pay the taxes and you have problem collecting it. So if every year you keep on raising the taxes, those of us who pay our taxes will, you know, we we tired too. You cannot continue to balance the budget on taxpayers homeowners and the business. You cannot do that. What I think you should do, those lackadaisical department that you have, that I believe you have, one of them is the building department that comes up every meeting. People cannot get contracts. You lose the money. If you have to wait six months, if I have to fix my house and I want to pump it and I have to wait six months, this lackadaisical, this to me, that's sabotage. Because why? Why you have a department that not doing what it's supposed to do? They're supposed to go. Another thing the comptroller bring up is revenues. I believe that every department that has to bring in revenues should be evaluated. How much revenue were you bringing? And why you're not bringing in as much as you bring in? And another thing is, I believe you should ask the governor for help. She could help us. I remember when you was running, my phone was buzzing. She was on it telling me to vote for you. So since she's telling us to vote for, then you should go to her and say, listen, we need help in Mount Vernon. You can help us. She, honey, it's she do it for other community, for other cities. I voted her. So if you don't ask, you don't get. So ask her. Uh, do something. You cannot continue to raise our taxes. I am a citizen. I work very hard for my house and I can enjoy it. I can because every year is 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 taxes, taxes, taxes. You can't do that. So try something different. I know you have uh we should have four minutes.
Good evening, Nicole Lucio, Mount Vernon, one oh five five two. And I actually piggyback off of what my neighbor said about the actual revenue. Several of the lines, um, it came in well below what was adopted for the twenty twenty-five budget. So without really knowing who is the owner, who's responsible for bringing in that revenue, what's the explanation for the revenues not being met? And what is the plan to meet the revenue in the future um against the budget for those reasons?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria and I'm a homeowner of Mount Vernon. Um, I think I'm and as well as the community here, Maria DeRosa.
DeRosa, thank you.
Um, we're here because our community is seeing another, once again, increase, which you mentioned is about six percent. I don't have my notes here from last year, but there's probably six, seven, seven and a half. So you're talking about what, thirteen percent in the past two years? Like, how do you expect us to survive in this city? There's no way. I, I mean, I wish I was more prepared. I would have come up with the PowerPoint to break down our expenses. Um, then I hear your expenses, but how about ours? For many residents, especially seniors, working families, longtime homeowners, as I am, this is simply not sustainable. Like, we cannot live in Mount Vernon if you continue raising these taxes this way. Um, I'm asking the council and city leadership for transparency, accountability and reasonable financial planning before placing another, once again, burden on our taxpayers. Um, we deserve clear answers to basic questions. Why are these back-to-back tax increases necessary? And where is this money going to? Like, we need clear transparency. Um, everyone knows about the cost of living, but uh often residents hear vague explanations about rising costs and inherited problems over and over. Um, but no, no need for specific number documentation solutions other than let's raise the taxes. Um, Mount Vernon should not balance it such on the backs of those hardworking community members like homeowners that should not have to pay out your expenses or your mismanagement. I'm sorry, but no. Before approving another increase, I am asking the council to show residents exactly Before approving another increase, I am asking the council to show residents exactly how our money is being used. The taxes that were increased last year, where did that go to and how was that being used? That now you're requesting or asking for another increase. What steps are being taken to reduce waste, improve efficiency, and stabilization in our city's finances? I mean, at the end of the day, we are all here. As you can see, a lot of our seniors, we've been here, Mount Vernon residents, for many, many years. We do not want to leave, but you are forcing us out. That's what it comes down to. We cannot live here anymore because of these increases. We pass down our increase to our tenants. Our tenants are working paycheck to paycheck. What happens? They can't pay the rent. So then we're stuck with tenants in our homes that can't pay the rent for months. It takes us months to get them evicted. So who does that fall onto? The homeowners. How do you expect us to pay taxes? This is why you had a five-page-long lien buyer, by I think, I can't even, I don't even know what it was called, but you were selling out those liens. There was like five pages. The people can't pay their taxes. So at the end of the day, you're losing out because we can't pay your taxes. So why give us an increase? Thank you. Okay?
Good evening, Rob Di Benedetta. Just wanted to, I wanted to comment a little bit of the budget. I understand taxes have to go up. Sometimes they have to go up. The problem is on my part, the services have to reflect it. The services have to go up for the taxpayers. I understand the budget raises you guys claim to have. But at the same time, you know, when I look at revenue and we've got eight point eight million dollars in revenue coming from surcharges from the taxpayer. That's a significant amount. That's about ten percent of your revenue coming in from the taxpayers. Because the people paying these, just for the garbage and for the water, the homeowner, I mean, the homeowners, the tires like myself. But I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with, I want to see our services better remember. I want to see that when you pull the police department, somebody responds, you know, somebody shows up. They don't tell you that, like, you ordered Chinese food, we'll be there forty-five minutes. They're on a waiting list. To me, that's the issue. I understand, listen, six percent, considering the school budget's more than at least seventy percent of our tax basis, thirty percent of our taxes going up six percent is not going to be significant. I pay, I think, a hundred and four thousand on my property. What is, what am I looking at? An eighteen hundred dollar, nineteen hundred dollar increase? I don't have a problem with it, but just make sure, in all due respect, in all due respect. I, well, hold on a minute. I want to see the services increased. That's what I'd like to, I'd like to see, you know, not looking at a budget with a million dollars worth over time, three million dollars, million dollars worth over time, two million dollars. Fleetwood, I am, they robbed the place three times in the past three weeks. There are services. We're paying the taxes. We're looking for the services. That's all. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jahira Garcia.
Just, I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay, so I actually moved to Mount Vernon a couple of years ago and I thought it was the best option for me to become a homeowner and have tenants of myself to make an income. But clearly, after moving and living here for a few years, I don't see any benefit. I feel like I'm losing money. I'm like, this is very unfair to everyone. And as a homeowner, I haven't seen any progress in the city of Mount Vernon. I feel as a homeowner, we should be heard. You guys recently sent out a letter the beginning of the month, if you have a three-house family, property, or more, that we have, it was our third and final notice. We never received the first one. We never received the second one and you guys are now one pay five hundred dollars for an inspection. And since living here, we have never received a letter of, so inspection is supposed to be done every three years. There was a couple that had their house almost, almost fifty years and they never received a letter or had to do inspection of such thing. So now we have to pay a third company to come and pay five dollars where we can find someone that can charge us cheaper. So why are we, why do we have to go through this? Why do we have to come to City Hall? Clearly, everyone wants to see a change here, but nothing is being done. So that's just, it's not fair.
Your last name, Danny?
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to say, just, this is my first time here and watching all this. I just kind of, I sit back there, I'm kind of dumbfounded that you have numbers on a PowerPoint which show you one point four, numbers you can't, you couldn't account for because the numbers you had weren't world to date. But you have advisors with you that I'm sure you meet with every three months to advise you on what, on what to do. You know, you are, you're serving us, right? So you have to balance these, these books. So when you see you have an overdrawn, you have to, you have to cut the fat from somewhere else to make, to make the books balance out. Right? So that's, that's my first issue is that these books, these books are overdrawn. And then it's like, let's just tax and hope. Let's, let's just keep taxing more and just keep, keep on hoping that something breaks, right? So you guys also speak about, you want to bring, you want to bring more into Mount Vernon, you want to increase the revenue. But you guys are all, you guys are all very smart. What you guys are hearing now is that the margins of being a landlord are very small, right? So when you have the buildings that are paying so much taxes, right, a lot of money in taxes, and they have to put a startup business there to start up and run and function, what kind of rent are they, are they supposed to get? Are they supposed to take a loss on that, on that building, taxes? Because what it would cost to run a business, to do it and to, and to have a business to make money, it's just not worth it here. And you can, and you can reach out and you can, you can talk to people. It's just not worth it here, right? The rent is too much. But when are we going to have like the correlation that high, high property taxes, high rent? Why, why we can't bring people in? High taxes, which, which equate then to high rent. So I think you guys got to sit back, you guys got to really think, and I think someone brought, brought up a great point. You got to go to the state. You got, you got to go to the state because I think that at, at this point, what I see now is that I think the mayor could, could do this job for, for free. You could probably do the show for free and I don't think we'd have a dent in it. I think Mount Vernon is too far gone. And I love, and I love Mount Vernon, but I think, I think we're too, I think we're too far gone. I think we have to really take a deep look and really sit down and say, what, what, what are we doing here? Because at the end of the day, you guys, you guys are serving the peoples. You guys have, you guys, you guys have an obligation to us, right? And we all, we all love Mount Vernon. We're, we're all here. But at some point, we got to call spade to spade. That's all I got.
I'm Kathy Bell, a homeowner here in Mount Vernon. And let me start by saying that I don't think budgeting is looking at projected expenditures and expected revenues and then filling the gap with a tax increase. It's not budgeting. Budgeting is looking at imposing productivity measures, cutting expenditures, reducing headcount. It is taking affirmative action so that your expenditures are met with your current revenues with a minimal amount of tax increase. That doesn't seem to be the process here. I mean, productivity, think about it. You've got three-man sanitation trucks. Now, I love the guys who pick up on, in my neighborhood, they're great guys. But most municipalities do not have three men on a sanitation truck. And it has to be negotiated with the unions. But while you're trying to give them a fair settlement, there should be some extraction of efficiency and productivity measures. And that takes some active work on your part. But hey, in October, October ninth, twenty twenty-three, News Twelve reported that the Mount Vernon City Council approved salary increases for the mayor and the controller during a meeting. The mayor's salary will increase nearly forty percent, going from a hundred and forty-three thousand to two hundred thousand dollars annually, while the controller's salary will rise by nearly forty-five percent from a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And thereafter, News Twelve again reported, the Mount Vernon City Council received salary increases. The council member salaries will rise by fifty-one point fifty-two percent, from thirty-three thousand to fifty thousand annually. Now, come on. I don't think you guys have done kind of work that is so exceptional that you deserve these huge salary increases. And I think as a measure of good faith, you should give back some of that money and reduce it by the amount that you're increasing our taxes, at least by seven point four eight percent, if not by more. Now, maybe that will not close the gap, but you're showing that the twenty twenty-six salary increases are over one point five million dollars. I think it'll help.
Good evening, Samuel Rivers, thirty Rockledge Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Good evening, council, mayor, comptroller. Tonight, we gather under a cloud of fiscal reality that can no longer be disguised, minimized, or postponed. As the New York State Comptroller has reported, and many of us have all suspected, our revenues have over overstated and tonight's budget presentation verifies the depths of our structural imbalance. So I just seen on the screen that we have over three million in projected revenues that are not in reality. You know, a city cannot prosper on false assumptions. But you know, this has been the practice of, no, it just didn't start with this administration. It started with administrations long ago when they just plug in these numbers and when then, when the tax increase was going to go up, they just bring in some revenue. But now we, we are at a moment in reality where, you know, we have no bond rating and we haven't money to pay for stuff. So now we're on the verge of bankruptcy. But we're not identifying the real trouble spots and the cost centers that can bring in some money. Like, the building department is a natural, natural revenue engine. But then the people that are, go have the building departments, they're treated like they're peasants. These are people, everyone who's coming to the building department is coming to bring some money, some form. So treat them. They're, they're your customers, you know, with something called customer service. So immediate action to implement this, I would propose a mandatory forty-eight hour review window for minor permits. I mean, this is not, you know, temporary staffing, if you need to, to, to do that, it is fine. Like, every permit delayed is revenue lost. Every inspection missed is revenue forfeited. We need to start treating this building and the people as, you know, businesses. If you give someone a salary of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, they must make sure that they bring in that revenue. You know, this is not, I mean, I have no problem. I love the police. But yeah, police officers make it two, three hundred thousand dollars a year. They're writing two and three hundred thousand dollars in tickets. Like, how are they paying for their position? I mean, we, we just can't do this. And once we adopt this mentality that, you know, we have to get a return on our investment, you know, we'll be better off. But, you know, real estate is actually not slowing down in Mount Vernon by a long shot. Real estate is the hottest it's been in Mount Vernon in years. We have the highest prices. And, you know, people are coming here. We are very close to the city, the major airports. The city is not slowing down.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Naim Murichi. I brought business here.
I'm sorry. I'm, I, if, no, I just need you to say it again.
Naim Murichi.
Naim Ruchi?
Murichi, M U R I Q I, yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, everybody. I am a resident of Mount Vernon for twenty-five years. I brought my business from the Bronx in Mount Vernon. I purchased property in Mount Vernon. And the main thing is you guys and we, everybody, we should try to bring businesses in, not to lose them. And the way we're going with these increases, it's not happening. So again, you know, we got to try to find a way to bring the businesses in because at this point, as we speak, I pay a lot of taxes for my properties. I went to building department to get a permit five years ago. They told me they're going to send it by mail to me. It was nothing major, just a little, you know, alteration. I came back after six months. They said, oh, you never filed for it. So luckily, I had a receipt that I paid for the permits and I showed it to them and they said, oh, we can't find anything on that matter. Again, things happen. I have no problems with that. I went back another time to ask a question at building department. There was a line from here to there. I asked a gentleman there, can I ask you a question if I can accomplish what I came for? He says, no, you have to wait on line. Everybody's waiting. I'm like, I just want to make sure I can accomplish or not. If you tell me no, then I'll come back at another time. So that's my only concern, not my only concern, among all the concerns. But the thing is, again, we have to try to bring people in Mount Vernon, to bring business in Mount Vernon, try to find a way to lower the taxes instead of raising the taxes. So that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Chisholm. I've been a resident here in Mount Vernon for over forty years. I agree with what everyone else has said before, that there should be a give back from the mayor, the comptroller, and everybody. What I would like to say is that when it comes to revenue, the parking meter people ride around in these cars that you bought, I see more brand-new cars for every department here in Mount Vernon and nobody's doing anything. They ride around. Fourth Avenue, Bramington Avenue, double parked, no one's getting tickets. It does not make any kind of sense. You can't go up and down the street with, with going in and out, you, you know, like a derby. This is ridiculous, but you're not doing anything. When it comes to our garbage, the sanitation people are horrible. Your garbage cans rise up in the street, they wind up bent up and no one's doing anything. You say something to them, they won't pick the cans up and dump the garbage out. They just take, they take the bags out and walk away and leave. You say something, you got to fight. I'm paying your salary. You're not paying mine. We should not have to confront the garbage men to do their job. What are you going to do when it comes to Fourth Avenue? The only thing you have on Fourth Avenue is hair stores, barber shops, and nail salons. You need to bring money into Mount Vernon. And that's something, you're getting paid to do it. Do the job. It, it does not make any kind of sense. I, you know, parking out here in a municipal, it's horrendous. Everybody who works here in Mount Vernon parks out there. I'm a senior citizen. I got to go over to the dilapidated parking lot in order to park, to come in and take care of business? That's ridiculous. If you are an employee, you park out there, you pay. Now, if you need somebody to write a ticket without being paid, I'll come and I'll write the ticket because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Manuel Pereira. I live in Mount Vernon since nineteen seventy-three. Mount Vernon back then was a very different city. Mount Vernon back then was a very different city. I would just like to bring up a few things, even though a lot has been said already. And I would start with the statement that our mayor said, or the comptroller, I don't remember exactly, that emotions are high tonight, and you're right, it was the, the mayor. And I'm originally from Portugal, and we have a lot of our community here tonight. We don't come here often. We don't come here often, but I think this is really an emergent situation for us. A lot of Portuguese have owned family houses in Mount Vernon for many decades. The story is that we're all getting old. A lot of the owners are like retirees right now. So, we're not getting anywhere near a seven percent increase on our revenue, on our income. You've created a new sewer tax a couple of years ago, you created a new refuse tax a couple of years ago, and we took it in stride, we didn't even show up over here. So, going back to the bringing new people here to develop in Mount Vernon, I can let you know that the permit situation is in total disarray. I'm a small contractor myself, and I know a lot of contractors. And when people ask them to come over to try to do things in Mount Vernon, they just say no. They just don't wanna give them more time with Mount Vernon, that's the reality. I'm in the sewer business, and I gotta congratulate you. You have some new sewer trucks that no other town has. I don't know how much they cost, but I can tell that they'll pass a half a million dollars easily. As far, as far as the robberies and what's going down, the quality of life in Mount Vernon, it's, it's on a free, free fall. They already mentioned here, the poor diner on Fleetwood has been robbed three times in the last three or four weeks. Police force contract supposed to have two hundred and eleven officers, I heard you only have one sixty-two. The PowerPoint was very nice, but the thing is, PowerPoints don't say the truth. Very basic economics, I think you'll need it right now. You need to cut spending and concentrate on the revenue because if you get a dollar and spend two, this is basic economics, how we run our houses, we spend less than what we make, not the other way around. The valuation that you show for our houses, it's very nice on a, on a PowerPoint, but if the climate is up, if the sidewalks are cracked, the streets are full of potholes, the valuation goes down, doesn't go up. And I know I don't have much time, but if we had the kind of raises that you put to yourselves, we wouldn't be spending our time here tonight. We don't have that kind of raise. Thank you.
Thomas Keller, twelve Pasadena Place, one zero five five two. I've only lived here three, five years, since nineteen eighty. And I don't know how many years I've come before the Board of Estimate, City Council, whatever, budget hearings, and gone over this budget very carefully, made some notes, made some suggestions, and none of them seem to be followed. So, I haven't done this this time. Maybe it's time constraint, maybe it's, you've done this in the past and you haven't listened. I'm gonna make a more broad-based suggestion. And by the way, when we show police, fire, TPW, we should show CFT eight two. And the fifth category is non-union. We don't know how many people work in Vernon, is it four hundred, five hundred, six hundred, seven? And... And in town hall meeting, at a comprehensive plan meeting, it was pointed out that the police and the fire pay some sort of, make some sort of contribution to their health insurance. But the other unions and the non-union people do not. This, this is an outrage with the cost of healthcare nowadays. As I mentioned in one of the previous meetings, when Mr. Reno, when he was county executive, said, look, you're gonna pay a portion, I don't know, it was twenty percent or something like that, to, to the people in the district attorney's office. He, he controls, he controlled the county executive office. District attorney was separate, but it's under the county budget. Anyway, it was imposed, and they didn't lose a lot of people. So, Comptroller Morton said that seven hundred thousand would be equivalent one point. If you can, if I move seven thousand more in revenue, reduce expenses, it brings it down by one point. I'm gonna challenge you. Let's get down to about two percent, that's going from six to two, which would be at the two point. Now, instead of one hundred nine million place, you're gonna contribute X amount of healthcare. And if you don't like it, there's the door, leave! It's, it's not a reason that they don't contribute. As far as it's a concern, decent five should pay, and should do something. And if they... And, and negotiate. We're gonna cut five people, ten people. And I know, that really hurts the people that see. So what? If you have a hundred people, you can pay X amount into healthcare, get that number, and if you don't agree to it, you got a little salary for your choice, that's what you have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
But, by the way, one, one more thing, I don't have anything more to say, but there are some people here in the audience that can speak beyond three minutes. City Council issued three plus one, Town Hall, Comptroller Morton gave people as much as, much time as they needed the other day. I think you should allow people to go over three minutes if they need to say something. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Marlene Worthfire, I live at one hundred Sycamore. Bravo for the Board of Education's passage of a resolution to counter the abusive use of pilots. Thumbs down on our city council for passing the day before Thanksgiving an outrageously expensive comprehensive plan that does not reflect the people who are mostly impacted by it. To add to the insult, you up there now are trying to push through a budget with now I'm learning more than six percent tax increase, where there's the possibility of city bankruptcy on the horizon, and again, this is the holiday season. Thanksgiving is a time to be grateful, not only for the abundance of the day, but for each of, but each day of life that we are blessed with. I ask you up there, along with others in the administration, to take a serious look at how and why you are spending parts of your given days turning your backs on your community. Indulgent developers, which result in increased density and taxes, burdening our infrastructure, leaving us with no well-thought-out alternatives that offer a creative and productive expansion of our tax base. A recent state assessment of the Board of Education has resulted in an embarrassing detailed account of its dysfunction and abuses. Perhaps we need to keep that door open to the state governor and comptroller. For me, it is regretfully clear that there is little reason to expect any sparkle from our jewel of Westchester if it remains with the current government structure and in the hands of people who are functioning as they are now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to speak against the budget? Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Hello, everyone, my name is Dion Slade, and I'm here to discuss basically the investment side from the city. I don't know if the city does do any investing at all. However, one of the largest, the best investments in the world right now has been Bitcoin. And I don't know that we have, there are countries that are investing in Bitcoin. Just last week, Texas invested ten million dollars in the Bitcoin, and I don't know that there are any local, there are some people in this room that are actually investing in it. And Bitcoin was, again, the number one asset in the world for the last ten years. America is about to make the reserve asset, and it was right now, it's about eighty-six thousand dollars. And it's available, there's a lot of foundational shifts when it comes to that investment. A lot of the banks, all of the larger banks are making it accessible. You can now get ETFs in your retirement accounts and things like that, and the ground is shifting underneath us. And I was wondering about, I was thinking about a city like Mount Vernon, sitting down and really taking a serious look at something like that. And because the returns have been two X, three X, five X in a short period of time, Bitcoin being eighty-six thousand dollars right now is expected to go to ten million dollars. So we're talking about revenue and things like that. What would it look like for us to come together as a community and take a real serious look at it? Because maybe you're not ready to do anything like that. But the time is now, and United States and China, both of them have billions of dollars are about to go into that space. And when that happens, there is a lot of things that's going to be changing. It's not only Bitcoin itself, there are, it's happening in the real estate. People can buy real estate, like digital real estate, they can buy art, there are so many things there. And I think that this is something that we need to start paying attention to, we need to start looking into that. And, you know, it would definitely help our city when we need the help right now, you know? So, a lot of people feel that you have to buy an entire Bitcoin, you can buy fifty dollars worth of Bitcoin. The growth is gonna be the same growth. So, I say that there are... El Salvador, they just had a meeting last week, right, right before Thanksgiving. They're the number one country in the world that's investing in it. And again, I'm gonna say that Trump wants to make us the number one country. So if we're, if they're gonna be putting billions of dollars into this investment, then, you know, we should be smart enough to take advantage of this as well, you know? That's all I have to say, thank you for, for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the budget? Going once, is there anyone else who'd like to speak against the budget? Going twice, is there anyone else who would like to speak against the budget? Going three times? Is there anyone online? Please, if you wanna speak again, we're asking you to come forward because once we offer it three times, it'll close the hearing, so please come forward.
Good afternoon, good evening, really, my name is Patrick DeRosa, I've been a resident in Mount Vernon.
I'm sorry, if you could just repeat that for me?
Patrick DeRosa?
Patrick DeRosa, thank you.
Yeah, I've been a resident in Mount Vernon, I was born and raised here. I was very fortunate, I had two parents that supported me my entire life, right? Unfortunately, growing up in Mount Vernon, I've seen a lot of change, you guys have done your part with, especially with the school board, right? Unfortunately, for me, when I was growing up here, my parents were concerned by safety. Mount Vernon looked like a different place. So, as they were paying the property tax and the school tax of the continent, they also continued to pay for private education, right? That came out of their pocket. One thing about Mount Vernon, it's a county in Westchester or a city in Westchester. Westchester has some highest taxes in the county of the United States, right? Mount Vernon homeowners pay some of the largest school and property tax combinations in the state. Raising taxes, again, punishes the same group of people who are already carrying the financial load of the city. Most of the people or homeowners of Mount Vernon are middle-class Americans. When you start looking into Westchester, you start seeing big gap in salary, right? The median income per capita of different counties in Westchester, or I'm sorry, of different cities or hamlets in Westchester grows exponentially. You go to Scarsdale, you look at the median salary, you go to Thornwood, you go to Mount Pleasant, Mount Kisco, all these places, we're comparable in our tax obligation to those places, but the financial, the median salaries of those earned here in Mount Vernon is a big gap. So I just don't feel how Mount Vernon has been mismanaging our funds throughout the years, and that's, that's a historical problem, you probably walked into it as mayor, but it's a historical issue. We just feel like it's enough where we don't wanna give more money for things that we haven't seen come to fruition. You guys have a great theory, but at the end of the day, it's projections, it hasn't, we haven't seen change. We wanna see change before we give more money, that's just it. Is fair?
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room or online? Is there anyone else in the room or online who would like to speak? Is there anyone else in the room or online who would like to speak? So we are closing up.
Hello, my name is Michelle Brown Conway, I'm on Summit Avenue. Just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Thank you. My concern is that there's too many people. Mount Vernon is growing by leaps and bounds because there's so many buildings that's being erected, and these buildings are coming into Mount Vernon because they have this agreement or they're given this gift of no taxes for twenty years or something. And then they'll put a little quote in it, I saw an article that says, oh, but they'll pay, they'll, will get about ten percent of something, even though they don't pay taxes, ten percent is not really doing anything. So, in the last couple of years, we had over a thousand, a thousand apartments, new apartments, so new of families, basically, a thousand new families that came into Mount Vernon. They don't pay for sanitation, they don't pay for the police, they don't pay for the schools, but they're using the services, we were already tight. How can we, with the little bit of money that we have, how can we stretch it? And you can't get it from the residents, we pay too much already. I should not be paying twenty-one thousand dollars and, and, and afraid to walk down the street, walk my, my puppy around the corner, watching my back. That shouldn't happen. We're paying like, you know, we, 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 we're, we're in Scarsdale or something, but yet, it's like we're in the roughest area in town. Why is this happening? And there's more buildings coming. If you go to Grace Baptist Church, Reverend Richardson talks about a building coming. With two hundred and twenty-five apartments. Buildings coming. If you go to Grace Baptist Church, Reverend... I have an echo for myself. The other one is Opal, that's three hundred and fifteen apartments, that's coming? Again, that building will not pay any taxes, when will that stop? We can't afford it. And I believe that's what the problem is, I truly believe that's what the problem is. And my last thing is, why, why isn't every resident, anyone who lives in Mount Vernon, why isn't there some kind of payroll tax that's taken? That would help tremendously. I've asked that before, and I never got a good answer. Everyone should be taxed, it can't just be a small percentage of folks paying taxes, it just won't work. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pedro, six-six West Lincoln Avenue. I'm a business owner, also a property owner in Mount Vernon, over thirty-five years in the city. And over and over again, I come in front of you guys, and it's, the proposal is always the same. You squeeze us, and no benefit... You squeeze us and no benefit from you guys. Please, in order for me to bring more revenue for this city, which I pay taxes to my business, or my business, more than one, also to my properties, how can I present this city to other investors when you guys don't clean your own houses? I'm talking about each department. Clean your house first. Squeeze your house first. Work in your house first. I'm talking about from the mayor, controller, DPW, which is for me, is my waste. Talking about DPW. However, help us by doing your work first. Make sure where you guys can save money instead of to ask more money from us. We are tired. Doing things overnight when we cannot be present, uh, present to defend ourselves, it's not respectful. Everybody else says pretty well. And when a guy says eighteen hundred dollars more in taxes, it's not, you know, enough for him. For us is. Eighteen hundred dollars more for a senior citizen, it's a lot of money. Meantime, make sure that you guys do your work first, behind the scene. Save money and help us to help you guys. Good night.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please, if you would like to speak, if you could kind of get in the aisle so, or so we can have an idea. Thank you, sir.
How you doing? My name is Pedro Olivera. I was born here in Mount Vernon, right in that hospital. I went to the schools here. I own a business here. I own property here. I love this city. Tonight I heard about revenue coming from regular tickets, sewer, water, red light ticket. This is, these are tick, these are revenues coming primarily from the residents themselves. Normally, if you have street cleaning in other cities, it's hit from eight to ten. Mount Vernon's from eight to twelve. That means parents that go to, have to drop their kids off at school, they're getting tickets. People that don't, that, that come home late at night, it's hard to find parking tickets, one. How many commercial vehicles are going to be allowed to park on the city of Mount Vernon without being ticketed? Commercial vehicles, it says, right, when every entrance to the city says, you can't park commercial vehicles in, on city property. That doesn't matter. People do it, they do it because they can. Nobody's going to bother them. And I drove, I, I, my first job was on South Fourth Avenue, Clover Donuts. The best glazed donuts in the, in the city. Let's just talk about that. So I'm a Mount Vernon guy. I drove bus. So I used to drive, I used to come to walk to work because I lived on North Fifth Avenue, walk to work on South Fourth. I remember going from, from First Street all the way to the end of Second, like Second Avenue and all the Third Avenue. Those businesses were all open. I drove around the city. They're closed. Who wants to come into the city? Properties are burned down for lease, for that, for this. You don't want to come here. And then you see people getting jacked up for, every, every week they're getting jacked up. Who wants to come here? It's sad to say. I love the city. This is the best city in Mount Vernon, in Westchester. I'll talk shit. I'll talk bad about Mount Vernon, but dare nobody talk bad about Mount Vernon in front of me. Because this is my city. And everybody here loves this city. It doesn't, this is the, in one block, you'll, it looks like the United Nations threw up in Mount Vernon. You have, I know more about culture because of Mount Vernon. You go outside of Mount Vernon, nobody knows. In one block, you'll have the Mexican family, Jamaican family, Dominican family, Portuguese, and Italian, of everybody. This is the best city in Mount Vernon, in Westchester. Nobody could tell me otherwise. I'm telling you. And then, but the sad thing about it is that even the jobs that you offer in Mount Vernon, people become police officers, DPW workers. They can't even afford to live here. Imagine, the salaries you pay don't allow your own employees to live here. That's sad. That's not good for nobody. People just want to live in the city and become part of the city. Now it's us against you. And this never should be that. You should be with us. That's what we want to do. Just live in Mount Vernon and everybody loves this. We're not here because we hate it. We're here because we love it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the budget? Online or in person? Anyone who would, online, if you're online?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me? Can you hear? I don't know who, did somebody, okay, hi, my name is Shaz Darden and I'm in the Oakwood Heights area. And I just want to reflect on what many people have said and bring about some additional information. When each of you ran, especially in twenty nineteen, you ran on being from Mount Vernon as if you loved the city. You beat a man who was a successful businessman. And that's why I didn't support you. Because the, your opponent was a successful businessman. Mount Vernon is not a social service. It is a business. And it requires the hand of people who are judicious and understanding of finance. You get into office and all of you say, oh, that's the way it was before. And then you give yourself raises. As other people have pointed out, salary increases are based on performance. Your performance has all been abysmal. Give back those raises as a show of appreciation to all of us who are taxpayers. We are overburdened and we are tired. And this constant need to deliver half-truths is repulsive. Just like someone else said, you show parts of a budget. You show DPW, the police, but you don't show the support staff. For example, what does the constituent services director do other than follow you around? That is not a meaningful job. I have asked dozens of people to explain what their job is and what constituents have been, have benefited at all. None. We don't have time anymore for the smoke and mirrors, the cameras and the games. The next election for mayor will be a gigantic playing field. And what they're playing against is your failures. So it's important now to right-side the ship. There needs to be an austerity budget immediately. You cannot continue taxing people when the real truth is you're taxing people for the sole benefit of getting them out of here so that you can have developers come in and take over these people's land. That's what that whole taxing situation is about. And that was exposed about that whole rela, whoever your biggest campaign finance person is. So it's enough already. And I'm just glad to see that people are finally, finally waking up. Thank you.
We have another person online. Please, you can speak, unmute yourself. The person in the black hat who is online, if you can unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, good evening.
Yes?
My name is Emmanuel Bill.
Can you repeat your name again?
Emmanuel Bill.
Emmanuel Bill, thank you.
I live on Beetwood Avenue.
You can proceed.
From Bradford to South Columbus has been a speed road for us. We've requested for street bumps to decrease the speeding on this street on Beetwood. For almost six years now, nothing has been done. And I don't know the reason. We were given that this is, have been, the streets are being paved by priorities or something. Well, it has been paved. When these guys were doing it, I spoke to the contractors who were doing the street that we need bumps over here. They told me the city hasn't authorized them to put bumps on the street. That is one of my problems. The second problem is, why do we have water meters? And you, you have a minimum bill to pay. I use less water, but each time my bill comes and I check my bill, I'm being, they said I'm being charged the minimum, which is more than the water I used. So why am I paying more? If I have a meter to read the amount of water that I use, why do I have to pay more? Because you set up a minimum. It's not right. I think it's cheating and you are robbing the citizens of this thing. Don't say that my, my meter is reading fifteen and you said a minimum for eighteen. So I'm always paying eighteen instead of fifteen that my, uh, meter reads. You have to look into this and this. If I have a meter, what the meter reads is what I should pay. I shouldn't pay what you have said for the minimum. The other thing about sanitation too, if it goes on record, I think I've called sanitation the office more than anybody in Mount Vernon. And this is about them. They don't care. I don't think, maybe they do it to the black homeowners. Each time they pick up the baggage, the bag, uh, the garbage will be on the cab. When they finish, they just throw, uh, the garbage on the streets, the containers on the streets. And the same time, I talked, I talked to them and it's like, they want to have a problem with me because I'm telling them to put the garbage cans on the.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I've heard, I've received your concerns. You're just not in the room. The time did run out, but that was the last. You're concerned about the garbage cans and them being put back on the curb.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anyone else online who would like to speak?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes?
Okay, so my name is Deborah. I am on Claremont Avenue. I moved here like from the Bronx almost ten years ago. And I thought that Mount Vernon was the place to raise my family, a different environment, a much quieter pace, all of that. Now, since I've been here, my taxes, I, I start out with this mu, this much. And my taxes are so high, I can't even stay home to enjoy my beautiful house that I do have. I have to be working like fourteen hours, six days a week, just to pay the taxes to live where I live. And in front of my house, it's, 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 it's a river. I have to use a boat to get inside my house. I don't have a curve. And I'm paying so many taxes. We can't afford it. I can't afford to live here anymore. I'm giving myself two years for my son to leave high school and I'm out of here. I love this place, but I can't afford to live here. And now you're talking about more taxes that I can't even afford. I'm already struggling as a single mother to raise my son here and I can't even afford it. And I love this place. And I thought that Mount Vernon was going to be the place, but I was so sadly wrong.
Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Casey. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Casey Schaaf, Oakwood Heights, Willard Avenue. Um, so I agree with all of the sentiments from those in the room that spoke. Um, austerity measures must come before any sort of discussions around tax increases. Uh, the, the city is in a spending crisis, not a revenue crisis. Mount Vernon can't keep spending faster than it earns. If any of us were in a position where we're, you know, overspending, we would need to look at our own budgets and find areas that we can cut. And there just seems to be a lot of fat in the process. And I, I'm just, I'm just floored by, by how much my taxes have gone up over the last five years since I bought a home here with my wife and just the lack of services that we get. And that I constantly struggle with the building department, which is again, a revenue driver for the city. And they won't, they, they don't take action. And, and that's all throughout the process. And it, it just absolutely floors me. There's real issues of structural imbalance, worsened by pilots that reduce the tax base. I, I wanted to make a clarifying point about that, that somebody made a note that they don't pay taxes. They do. So it's pilots as payments in lieu of taxes, but they're paying a portion of the taxes, not the full amount. And these are under the assumptions that, you know, not everybody's going to have kids. Well, I'm not going to have kids. So does that mean that I shouldn't have to pay school taxes? No, I do it for the betterment of the society. And, and that's what just really frustrates me with the, with the way that there's the shrinking commercial base that puts an unfair burden on the homeowners, plenty of vacant properties and corridors, which means less, uh, commercial taxpayers and the heavy pilot development strategy just really shifts the burden to the homeowners. And so I'm looking for more cost constraints, city obligation, stopping to expand obligations and control costs, looking at areas that we can cut costs. I see so many city vehicles on vehicles that I, I would not feel responsible purchasing. And I have, I'm, I, I just can't wrap my head around why, why we need these full-size SUVs that are, are just a depreciating asset. And I'm, I'm kind of rambling now, but, uh, the, the main piece is, my ask is for an austerity version of the budget in showing what measures are being done to control costs and increase revenue. And what, what also just disturbs me is the, the understaffing of the police force. If there's something that I'm willing to pay taxes on, it's, it's for the emergency services that, that we may someday rely on. And, and so that's another area that I think needs to be reevaluated. And then looking at the overtime of those. I, is it a staffing problem that's really causing the, the issues? Or, or like just looking into that because usually overtime means we don't have good staffing schedules. And I'll, I'll end my rant now. Thank you.
Thank you. And any more people in the audience online who want to speak, please come forward. Good evening.
Just about the noise in the city and mismanagement. Because I, in the street I live is, um, modify mufflers, cars with a noise. We sometimes we sleep like two, three o'clock in the morning. Guy pass by the car is forget about noise. We don't know, we're happy, don't know if it's a some kind of explosion or whatever it is. I think for the city could, you know, enforce that thing. And let's say, if they have money to modify those cars, they can pay like, let's say five hundred dollars if it come for the city. Kids driving four-wheelers, dirt bikes in the middle of the streets, they time whatever. They do whatever they, they want. They don't have plates. They don't have insurance. They have nothing. Traffic gonna stop to let them pass to avoid accidents and everything. Why the city don't impound those bikes, four-wheelers and go in the push cup, sell those things and more income for the city. Uh, it's, it's so many things you can do in the city and the speed cameras. Come on. Okay, safety cameras, but that is, I think the money could be used for other things than that. And they was talking about taxes, that's six percent increase, I think. Most of the people in Mount Vernon can't afford that. But, you know, I think he's an out of range, but little things the city should do even for income. Help the city. People drive back and forth. They do whatever they want. They turn right, left, no blinkers, okay. Nobody, you don't do the, don't make. Nobody, you don't do the, don't make the blinkers, to put the blinkers on, fifty dollars. More income for the city. Is thousands of people do that. Tinto windows. Have, oh no, it's against the law. Okay, it's against the law. Is it driver's side, passenger's side, rear, um, windshield, front windshield? All, all, and, oh no, don't worry about, oh, I got, um, something from the, the doctor. Is that legal? But I'm saying is it, and cars like that. I, I think that, you know, it's, it's things like a mismanagement. What happened to the trucks a few years ago? The garbage trucks, I'm sorry, the collecting trucks. Problems, the city, uh, Yonkers came in here to help the city of Mount Vernon. Okay, but they found something wrong with the trucks. Somebody did the, you know, something wrong with the trucks. Why? And then I think the city is not doing the right job, you know, controlling certain things more important than, you know, and now this, the six percent increase, I, I, I think this is our, our line. I'm sorry, but.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Thank you very much, everyone. Um, does anyone have closing comments? Hmm? Is there, it's really three. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? So that's four. Controller? Is there anyone who wants to speak for the budget? Okay.
I hear you. I just.
Oftentimes, you know, in, in the past, mayors required commissioners to get up and speak. That is not a practice that I've done. You know, forcing people to come up and speak for the budget. It usually falls on ears. It, it feels disingenuous to the taxpayers when we come up and speak for the budget. And so we have some of them here, but I don't ask them to stand in the middle of the aisle and give a commissioner's parade to speak on behalf of the budget. I've been in that position before. I didn't like the way it felt. And so I don't ask them to do that. Um, Controller Morton, do you have any closing comments?
No, I don't think so at this time.
Okay. Everyone, thank you very much for coming. Um, I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to address a few things. Mister Keller, Mister Keller, Mister, so you did ask about employee pay-ins. We do have employee pay-ins to the benefits, for the medical benefits. This year that did add a half a million dollars in revenue to the budget. We did not add CSEA and Teamsters, but unelected, um, elected and non-elected staff who are not unions will be paying into their medical. Okay. That's before the city council right now. Um, there was a question about reaching out to the governor. We have reached out to the governor. The governor's office does not offer operating monies. They have given us about a hundred and seventy million dollars for infrastructure expenses. That is how we have worked on the sewers. That's how we have paved forty miles of roads. That is how we have purchased the sewer trucks that I heard were in such great condition that do not come out of the taxpayer budget. Um, payroll tax, we cannot issue a payroll tax to non-residents who come and work into the city. That is not legal. We would have to do that through the state of New York. There are only two communities in the state that have been granted a local payroll tax, and that was Yonkers and New York City. The state said long time ago, they weren't doing that anymore. I believe at one time, New York City, I can't remember if they took that back. But if they did take it back, then they wouldn't get it back from the state. And so those are just some of the very large items that people spoke to that I wanted to give an answer to. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have heard your concerns. Your concerns are the same as ours. We are homeowners here in the city as well. Um, and we experience the same fiscal challenges and constraints. And thank you so much.
Um, I move to adjourn this meeting, this hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Move to.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call. Come, Controller Morton? Council President Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Patterson Howard? Aye. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.